Members, don't go anywhere. Thirty seconds. Okay. We have a budget work session scheduled to last until three o'clock. But since there has been a delay, we could use a little more time if we need to. On the other hand, we have another work session coming up on Thursday evening. And so for this evening, we're not doing any presentation, which was done at the last board meeting unless, you know, there is more first step to share with us before we do Q and A and discussion sharing of potential amendments by board members.
If you'd like, we did this morning post just a brief presentation of an outline for today that I'd be happy to go through, or we could head straight into discussion.
If we can do within five minutes, you think?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yes. So for, so board members know, we did post additional information this morning. The documents that were posted were just a PowerPoint showing an outline of what we could discuss today. To make things easier for board members, we did repost the departmental reductions from our work session on the first, just so they were convenient and handy to you. And then the other thing we did is from the PowerPoint presentation that Dr. Lockhart gave last Thursday, we combined into one document all of his recommendations to balance the budget. So there's one document that includes the reductions fees and the increase in benefits for parent liaisons. So that's just there for your convenience. So today, we have an agenda posted on Slide Two. In addition to the items that I just posted, I also wanted to talk about we've continued to post budget question responses. The most recent ones were posted while you were at lunch. So for any of you who have those, you may want to look at those as well. So just so everyone knows, in terms of our most recent budget questions that were posted, in addition to the ones on the slide, we've continued to post questions. The most recent this morning were related to the increase in the staffing formula ratio. There were two posted there, and they're items number 101 and 102 in your question set. And we also had questions about community use fees and could we potentially increase those fees and which groups will be impacted. And that was posted as question number this morning. And then from your last work session, we also had questions that were posted for today. So you'll see the questions on class size, the information about a bonus, and what would it cost to provide employees who are not receiving a salary increase as a result of the compensation options in the budget. And that bonus information is posted as budget question number 98. So all of those have been posted since the work session. And we also had a number of questions regarding elementary class size. So for reference, we've posted the regulation that controls elementary class size guidelines. For your reference, they're printed on the slides. You can see each of them. Last year, that regulation was updated to ensure that our elementary class sizes have fewer than 30 students, so 29 or below, and that information is shown on this slide. And then I also wanted to remind the board that in total, we added $10 million to the staffing reserve in FY17. And we had added additional funding to ensure that we could meet the original class size guidelines that were put in place. And then we added another $7.4 million last year to have positions in our staffing reserve to get those elementary class sizes below 30, so at 29 or below. So in total, this chart shows you that we have 438 positions that are budgeted in the reserve that could be used to meet any classes that would go above this guideline. And then just as a reminder, the board may wish to or has the option to add additional one-time positions to the staffing reserve as part of a quarterly budget review, whether that be year-end or even mid-year next year, if additional positions are needed to meet these class size guidelines. And those class size guidelines will remain in place for FY18. Okay, so going very quickly, the other information that was requested was information about our recommendation in terms of the teacher scale implementation. So this chart, which is shown on Slide Six, looks at a master's degree teacher lane. So when we look at this, in the columns are different steps on the lane. So it starts with step one, so a first-year teacher with a master's degree. Then we have step five, 10, or five, 15, 20, 25, and 30. 30 would be at the top of that scale. So then when we look at the rows going across, the first row that you'll see is the FY17 market average. So that was the average for each of those steps. And then you'll see what our FY17 scale was on that first green shaded line. So then those next two rows show you the difference between FCPS's FY17 scale and the market average as a percentage, and then the next line shows that dollar difference. So you can see that we still had the greatest gap in terms of the middle of our scales. So then that second green line shows the impact of Dr. Lockhart's recommendation to phase in those future scales over five years. So that green line shows what the value of that master's degree lane would be at each of those steps. Then because we don't have FY market data from all the surrounding jurisdictions, we've compared it to the FY17 market average, the data that we have. So when you look at that, you can see that we're still behind the market average for FY17 after our FY18 investment. Then on the next slide, we had the question about how does compensation then affect that market comparison? So this chart adds to the FY17 market data, the impact of that benefit value to employees. So you can see after we add the impact of benefits for mid-career teachers, we're still below the FY17 market average. So we thought... So from here, that was my last slide, other than the upcoming dates that we have. So I thought I would turn the meeting back over to Mr. Moon. In terms of really looking today, our goal for today's work session was really to provide the board with time to really discuss Dr. Lockhart's recommendations that we have and to discuss any other potential amendments or recommendations that board members have as we work towards balancing the budget. And the last slide just reminds the board, as Mr. Moon stated, that we have public hearings tomorrow evening, and the board has another work session this Thursday evening before adopting the budget on May 25th.
And we are closing the sign-off for the budget public hearing tonight, 5:00. 4:30. How many people have signed up so far? Forty. And we are scheduled to start at 6:00. Okay, thank you. With that, I saw a hand go up from that side. Mrs. Hoff?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for providing that information. Can we go back to the slide that shows where we are in the reserve and what we have budgeted for? Okay. So for the, of the 438, you have the remaining not completed because we haven't finished the fiscal year? We have none left.
So in this current school year of the 438 positions, we actually allocated all of them out. We had no positions left in the reserve.
And when, at what point did the reserve go to zero?
I believe we had allocated all the positions out by January.
And if we've needed extra since then, we've done what?
So typically, once we get to the latter portion of the school year, we don't hire any people into positions once we get to these spring months. So in the spring months, you know, we would use substitutes to get through the remainder of the year. As part of FY17, we did look at the balance between instructional position, instructional assistant positions and teachers and make some adjustments to ensure that we were able to meet all of the requests from schools in terms of the class size guidelines and other reserve requests.
Okay. So I'm gonna, one thing we've talked about a long time ago is I still advocate that we change the terminology staffing reserve. I think it's very misleading as to what it actually is and what we're doing. Reserve, by definition, is something to the side and extra, and this is actually not what that is. So I still want to advocate for that. And then I see that for FY18, we're budgeting the same amount. We used it all in January. We are expecting more students. We don't know where they're going to show up. We've, I know, increased the budget for 10 million to accommodate that increase in students. But given the fact that one of the requests, one of the superintendent recommendations is to increase class size by half, how is that reserve going to ensure we stick with all of those regulations?
Sure. So in part, how many positions we need from the reserve is also influenced by how our actual enrollment comes in as compared to projected. So, you know, we won't know in terms of this next school year if our enrollment will be over under that projection. Consistently, we're very close to that projection, but it does matter as we look at it at every individual school level. So I think as we're allocating positions out of the reserve, you know, watching class size, if there is a need to increase those positions in order to maintain our class size guidelines, you know, we would come back to the board.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll let my colleagues know that I really, and I probably need to do a better job of calling one-on-ones to have some conversations about the increase in the class size because the more I look at this, and I feel like we are, you know, increasing on one end to then decrease on another, which is going to be more expensive than just figuring out a way not to do it, in my opinion. And I think that we, I think we need to really do that. Can we go to the salary total compensation chart? And thank you for doing this. Thank you for hearing that and completing it. Last year, we targeted that middle ground by contributing 40 million. And here, as I'm looking at this, I'm looking at step 15 and 20 really being the ones that are going to continue to be paid under based on the work we've already done and the work we're trying to do. Is this total compensation as if we don't do anything for FY18? Or is this assuming we do the five-year implementation of the salary scale?
On the total compensation slide, this is looking at FY17 market data.
I understand that, but is it assuming we are doing the five-year implementation starting FY18?
Is this still FY17 data?
So this would be as if we had, we did nothing?
Correct. Correct.
It's after last year's contribution to the teacher salary scale, but doesn't include the proposal of this year.
So you did the proposed for the salary, but you didn't do it for the compensation? So can we have that?
Sure, we could provide that information. And this was just to give you some context as to where 18 might be because we don't have all the data for the other jurisdictions on 18.
No, I think that's great. I appreciate that, but I would like to see it for total compensation as well. That's, that's the market now. That's not if we did the proposed budget. So I would like to see that bottom line for the proposed budget for Thursday.
Seventeen. Eighteen numbers against seventeen, correct?
Compared to, absolutely. Yes, please. And, and so I guess in conclusion of my opening questions, you know, the things we hear from our employees is overwhelmed and feeling underpaid. And so when I look at what we're considering for our budget, I want to make sure we are looking at that total compensation with if we did the five-year implementation. I'd actually... Well, I'll hold, I might go offline. I want to look at the numbers first and then decide what else I'd like to see. But I would like to look, us to come up with a way where we're not continuing to overwhelm increasing class size, continuing to underpay. But I also want to make sure we're having the conversation in total compensation. You know, we had the ERFC conversation. We got lots of emails that that was what employees really cared about, and they didn't want it touched. And so now we have to figure if we're not touching that, then how are we going to make sure we compensate our employees to retain and hire? Thank you.
So when you say for the Thursday evening, you know what, Mrs. Hoff is asking, when you say total compensation, you mean salary plus all the benefit components?
I think they understand. Slide number seven, considering we do the FY18 proposed scale.
Correct, and we'll still compare back to FY17.
Compared to FY17.
Right, no other option. And then maybe along with the presentation of that new slide, maybe also can you present alongside the budget question where we're showing the MSA that the other schools are doing? I think that will give us an idea of how close we are because if they're not doing an MSA and we are, then FY17's market average might not be too far off.
Okay. That's the next step. Just do that again. Formulate a sentence or two when you do the next step. I have a Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. I now have visited all but one school in the Drainsville District and asking specifically about staffing and the budgetary proposals. And I believe to date, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Lockhart, I think everybody, so far, they've looked at their staffing sheets or starting to hire, but their staffing sheets are based on the proposed .5 change in the formula. And as I've visited all my schools, I wanted to know exactly how that would impact them. Can they absorb it? And then looking at our caps and the $10 million. And of course, everybody would love to not have any constraint on those issues. But I'm, what I'm finding is that, given what we've put out there, everybody will be able to stay under the caps as long as we keep the $10 million in to keep them under the 30. But what I'm assuming, the long-term impact would be that setting aside if we change the floor from 17 to 18, the impact at the other end is that you would probably see more classes coming up, but still within the cap is what I would presume. But at any rate, as I am visiting schools and they span Title I to school-serving, you know, wealthier communities, it looks to me, at least from what I've seen, that their staffing will be okay. Their biggest issue is just being able to hire good teachers to fill the positions that, that they can based on the budget. So I'm not seeing any, any really unusual issues. And I also have to compliment our regional assistant superintendents and, and again, HR. I see a lot of very reasonable decisions being made and reasonable balancing and very appreciative of the early, early hires. So that's the view from the schools in the Drainsville District so far.
Any other board member? Ms. Pearlcheck to be followed by Mrs. McLaughlin.
Just a question that may or may not be for you, but I was asked this as we look at the information and compensation for next year. Do you know at this point, and this might be a question for Dr. Lockhart, what information we have from exit interviews or surveys or conversations with our principals or Dr. Ramey from last year?
Oh, we know from our, talking about our principals, when we talk about compensation and class size, their priority is on the compensation for our teachers over the class size piece generally. But in terms of exit surveys, we're still working on that since we talked in the fall, revising an instrument that we can use. But then we just had a conversation with our employee groups the last couple of weeks about having them help us gather this information. They do, a lot of them sit down with their teachers as they leave. They just don't have a standard form that they utilize. And so we're going to work on that so we can start doing some sampling to provide some qualitative alongside the quantitative data that we use for exit surveys. So we don't have that to date, but we're working on that in preparation to have in the fall when we come back. But we'll continue to monitor as we get it in.
Okay, so the idea is in the fall, there will be more of the qualitative and quantitative?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have Ms. Corvusandas to be followed by Mrs. Shortz and Mrs. McLaughlin.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your hard work on getting these questions answered. I found it very helpful when you provided the impact of the increase in class size on each of the schools. And then when you look at that and the number of staffing trades, it, it paints an interesting picture, to say the least. I guess this question is more for Dr. Lockhart as to how you envision making sure that schools put a priority on class size versus trading out resources. Because I know that there's, if you look at the average class size, especially for our high schools, they all look quite reasonable. But then you have in those schools, some classes that are significantly higher and others that aren't. And so I'm wondering if there's something that you can do administratively to make sure that we don't have an average masking the certain classes with, you know, 35, 38, close to 40 kids in a high school classroom.
So we actually started some of that work last school year. It really begins now during staffing. Our region assistant superintendents are working with each of their schools to examine their staffing. And we continually, I was looking to see if Dr. Avery was here, but we have a couple of RASs representing. We continually monitor class sizes in each of our schools throughout the spring and then through the summer. And one of the first questions the RASs are going to ask principals, if we see bubbles or places where we're growing, is is this a school that's already traded a position somewhere? And if it is, then we're asking them to reexamine that trade to see if the priority needs to be refocused on the rising class sizes that we have. So I do feel like that question is continually examined, and our folks are held accountable for the decisions that they're making in terms of the staffing that's being allotted. And when we decide, okay, you're at a place now where we do need to go to the reserve because you've, you've maxed what, what the formula said you were supposed to get. So I feel like that, that does get continually, continually monitored. It's already started, and it continues up through when school begins this year in September. August, sorry.
Thank you. I have a Mr. Shortz to be followed by Mrs. McLaughlin.
So a couple of things I thought we might see today. One was the list of actual class sizes. Are you...
So we posted a number of budget questions, both Friday, maybe some over the weekend, and more this morning.
Yeah, it's a little busy this weekend.
I know. I completely understand. So we started...
Just the college, you know, capstone event called graduation.
Yes, yes.
So it's not, it's not posted on the, on, on the, with the agenda?
No, so we posted a number of questions.
So the reason I have, okay, so I'm obviously going to have to look at that tonight. The question number 93, so 99, so the reason I have questions about that because in, I'm, I guess I'm woe to understand how, Ms. Strauss, you say this, you know, won't affect the schools in your district. One, the cap only applies to elementary schools. So to say that it won't affect the schools and the fact that schools can quote-unquote "stay under the cap", what you're doing is talking about swelling classrooms to the maximum of a cap that we had to institute in order to keep down class sizes. So the notion that we're going to float everybody up to the maximum in certain areas of the county isn't, isn't palatable. And I don't think it goes to addressing what Ms. Huff brought up, which was the question of what does that do to workload? You know, if a, if a teacher, if every period, a teacher has the maximum number of students in their classroom, you know, what does that look like in terms of, you know, in a trade-off? Not a trade-off, but in conjunction with the salary scale, you know, of not having an MSA, not necessarily narrowing some of those lanes as fast as we had originally proposed. And then, oh, by the way, on top of it, if you're in an elementary school in some areas of the county, we're going to float you up to the maximum and squeeze a few more kids in your class. And, and there's, there's an intangible there that goes to workload and teacher stress and the productivity of the kids in the classroom. So I, you know, I will look at that, but it doesn't answer what's happening in the middle and high school. Now, does the information that you provided also include middle and high school? And all classes or just the core classes?
No, it's just the core and it's grouped by the four core areas.
So, so when I met with teacher associations where, where it could or talking individually to teachers, it is the courses that are, or the classes that are outside those four core that get the spillover. And so you either lose additional options and offerings where the principals really get, struggle to fill the classes. And they're like, okay, well, I've got to make a choice because I've either got, you know, a class that has, you know, 36 or 38, and I can't offer another section of it. So I either got to squeeze that many into one section or I'm not going to be able to offer some other alternatives so that I can break that up so I can offer another section of something that's in higher demand. And so then we get to winnowing choices for students in terms of the, the things that they get to register for and this, this spate of new students. And do you also have the distribution of the 2100, was it 2180? And 2180 students, do you have the distribution of where those are expected to come?
No, but we can get the projected or the enrollment for this year and next year to give you that comparison. But we did not post that.
But you had said that you, that the, the reason why you're so strong in your belief that we're improving, and believe me, I'm the first person that's going to be glad for that, strong in your belief about the accuracy of the increase in number is that you're doing it based on actual enrollments. And so you're, you're, you're projecting at this point, not at a division-wide level, but you're projecting at a building level. So aren't you able to tell us where the 2180 are coming from?
Yes, I just didn't bring that with today, but we'll make sure that we get that.
All right, I'm sorry. I had that on my list of things that I thought we were getting today. So that's important because the question is, are the 2180 showing up in elementary schools, middle schools, high schools? Are they showing up in one area of the county where classroom sizes are smaller so that there's more room to flex to accept them? Or are they showing up, I think Ms. McLaughlin, if you were getting there, or Ms., no, you haven't spoken yet, it was Ms. Corvusandas. Where, where's the space to absorb them? That becomes critical. So I had hoped that we would see that. And I'll reserve my other comments until my other colleagues have spoken.
Thank you. I have a Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Ms. Evans.
So I have a, I'm going to start off with just a quick administrative question. And I'm not sure if the clerk of the board can explain this or, or staff. But, you know, I realized we just had some responses come in today while, you know, we were working on it, and that's fantastic. But as I'm sitting here working on my iPad, pulling up information, I'm looking at my iPhone then to pull up the email that came in. Two out of the three emails, the link that says, oh, response to question number blah, blah, blah. You hit the link and it just says Board Docs doesn't work. Then the third question, I got it to finally work, and what does it do? It dumps me into page one of 246 budget indexes and responses. So unless someone wants to tutor me on, on how to do this more quickly, I don't understand. If staff has prepared a question, I would just love to get, here's the response. Like, we, we are spending way too much time having to then either, it's great when, yeah, navigating, thank you. It's great when my, when my assistant prints it off for me. And I have the most amazing budget question binder here, but otherwise, it's a lot of searching. So right now, I haven't even listened to my colleagues because I'm too busy trying to find the information that we all said we wanted to talk about today. So that's kind of just a parking lot if someone can then give me an explanation. But I just don't think this is working really well for us.
So, so thank you for the feedback. What we can do is the next time when we're posting budget question responses right before a board meeting, we can PDF those and send board members a PDF of that so they don't have to go to the whole budget question response. In that index, the questions are hyperlinked, but, but I confess I don't have an iPad, so I didn't, I haven't checked them.
So which, which question numbers are you referring to?
Well, so because I know at the Thursday business meeting, a bunch of us... Well, so because I know at the Thursday business meeting, a bunch of us asked questions, and I don't know them by the number, I know them by what the topic is, but it was basically 99, 100, and 101 got answered, but I, when I hit it, now Mr. Moon's on his laptop, I work on an iPad. And so I would say it would be great if, I don't know why, we just don't have the PDF always attached. If I open something up, it would be great to just have the information there. If it's a lot of work, that's one thing, but otherwise, if it's already been done, that would be great.
Sure, we'll be happy. The next budget work session, right before the work session, we'll just take the budget question link file, and we'll PDF it and attach it, just like we summarized the reductions for today.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, long-term for next year. I mean, it doesn't do us any good to get an email saying, here's the budget response, and you have to follow links, and on some of these devices, it won't work anyway. So now you're just waiting for a hard copy to show up, or you have to then get on a different type of device. Not upset with anybody, just making sure everybody knows, I'm just saying, you know, it's kind of an administrative challenge that we've got here. My big things are, first of all, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, you were kind of driving this one, the question of trading out positions. Since I can't open it on my devices, did you get a chance to read it? And if so, whether it's staff, or I would just like somebody to tell me, what did you actually, what was the high-level find of how many staff positions got traded out in this past academic year? I mean, what did the data tell us? Because I think for some of us, that's going to be one of the things we look at, is we're trying to put money into a staffing reserve, we're trying to figure out how to mitigate a class size increase. But what I don't know, and Ms. Corbett-Sanders, you were kind of picking up on, is how often were we doing, trading out of a teaching position for another position that the schools wanted in their building, but it was at the sacrifice of a teaching position?
So when I looked at the data that was provided, and it was very helpful, thank you, what I found was interesting was that the overwhelming majority of positions that are being lost or being taken out of schools before you do any trading are in those schools that are experiencing the change from seven, the floor of 17 to 18. And so you have Region 3 actually having a higher number of teaching positions lost than elsewhere in the county. But then if you go through and you look at the very detailed list that you all gave, based on your projections for staffing, for students for next year, then you have many buildings that are losing just one teacher. And then if you go across, you see that they may have traded out a teacher this year, or they've traded out more than one teacher. And so when you take that into account, then there is a lower number of schools being impacted by the change in the staffing formula. So one of the things that I was looking for is to have some guidance from the leadership team to the individual schools that says, we need to have a fidelity to the regulation, we need to actually think very critically before we trade out positions. And to follow up on Mrs. Schultz's comment about the size of certain classes, which tend to be the higher-level classes, the advanced placement courses and some of the honors courses, is I would appreciate having some guidance, because I sent you a question over the weekend, which said, you know, I like the averages for each school in the four core, but can you unpack that data a bit more to see whether, what the average is for some of the more advanced levels of those four core? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's a great question. And I think, just like we learned in the previous session, right, like bringing some principals in and having them talk through the rationale of why they do things, I think that would really help the board, right? I'll give you one example. So from my principal experience, let's say that I had a .5 left as I was going into the school year, and I know that I had a need with my kids in math, right? And I wanted to target a specific group of kids that I wanted to give them really intensive tiered support. So I would trade that out at the beginning of the year into cash, because the way the system works is the value of that position starts to lose cash value as you go through the year, right? Then I would wait in December, and then I would take that cash and trade it back into a teaching position, because then I could buy a full-time teacher for the second half of the year, right? And then I would target that teacher on that specific need, whether it be, say, kids that were struggling in Math 7 or wherever that might be, right? So when you look at staffing, and I was an elementary school principal, I'm not saying it's not complicated, but I, and I was in middle school and in the high schools, right? So your staffing operation gets increasingly more complicated as you go up into high school because you have many more offerings, and the more variables you have, and what you're trying to offer your kids is harder, right? So it is true that you're more likely to have an anomaly of a large class size that you've gone through your calculus as a principal and with your team and say, okay, that's going to have to be big so I can maintain these other things. So I think, one, hearing from a group of principals about trades, but that is where my flexibility as a leader to meet the needs of my building is how I, you know, manufacture, whether I push money in from textbooks to buy a position or pull it out to move it later on, I think it would help the board to have that discussion with folks to understand how it works.
Just quickly.
Quickly. So I agree with that, but then I think that I would like to push that we have some students and some teachers who are dealing with that as well. You know, that's one perspective, but what I'm hearing from is the families. You know, I started looking at this answer to question 99, which is the question about class size averages now. We have some kids in some high schools in their core math that are at 28, 29 average, and other kids in high schools, their math is 21. So that's a big difference in a class average between a few schools. And so it's, you know, although the principal's doing the best they can with the resources they have and, you know, making those real-time decisions, it's also impacting these families and these students in maybe ways I also would like to hear about, so.
So I will just share with all of my colleagues here, in terms of where we might be by Thursday, I think we need to have conversations with each other in understanding, I think it was 21.9 million was the number you showed up there for staffing reserve for the 435 positions. So interestingly, we use the staffing reserve to try and mitigate class size, large class sizes, but then we're also going to spend, we're going to, yeah, gain 14.7 million or so in a class size increase. So I, you know, and then I also want you to know that on Thursday, I was doing a little bit of the mental gymnastics on, so we increase class size and save 14.7 million. But then we accommodate the fact that we have new student growth coming in, and I think that number is somewhere at 11, 12 million. So the delta is like $2 million in terms of, you know, we will increase class size, reduce staffing positions, but then we, or teaching positions, but then we need to increase teaching positions in order to absorb our new students, and...
So in each of those cases, those adjustments are targeted at the individual school level? So while we're growing 2,180 students overall, right, that's the net impact of all those schools that are going up and down, right? So in that case, and in the case of the reduction and the reserve, they're really targeted allocations. When schools are having class size challenges, the first thing that we always look at is have they processed any trades, right? Because that's always our first question, right? And you can't receive, you know, positions out of the staffing reserve if you're running your class sizes high because you've traded out positions. So we do always start with that look. When we look at the reserve and the reserve allocations, right, the staffing reserve addresses not only cases where we're hitting those class size caps, but it also addresses fluctuations in that actual enrollment compared to our projected, right? So that money in the staffing reserve couldn't be interchangeable with that class size increase because we do need positions in the reserve to address enrollment fluctuations as well as those large class sizes.
I was just trying to demonstrate that we got a lot of different, you know, pools of money all directed toward, you know, how we're staffing, and it's very interesting when you start to maybe connect dots between all the different pots of money and then how they might impact one another. The other thing I wanted to just bring to everybody's attention is that staff did provide a response, again, I don't know the exact number, but it had to do with the activity fee, student activity fee versus an athletic fee. And I really appreciate staff having done that. And I really hope that my colleagues are going to be thinking about this one because, in fact, now I pulled it up, it's question 94. And what is interesting is if we went with a Montgomery County-type model, and if we went with a $50 activity fee, even just at the high school level, but I think that given we run the middle school after-school program, and we're looking at, as a system, how can we recoup costs for our expenditures, and that includes things like the pupil placement fee, we're going to charge $100 because it's administrative cost. So if you looked at the staff-led after-school activities, we could gain about $900,000 at the middle school level for a $50 fee, and then 1.7 million at the high school level. So, you know, at minimum, you're looking at $2.6 million that actually yields more than saddling just our athletic families with a $100 fee. So I do hope people will carefully consider that one. I think that, at least for families, will appear more equitable rather than targeting just certain families and student populations. I think probably many of you have seen that we have started to hear from our athletic boosters and the presidents. And just to give you some context, each year, we budget about $1.8 million in just operational expenses for our high school directors of student activities offices. And what I have heard anecdotally is that countywide, our athletic boosters then bring in at least another $1.9 million. And so what we're talking about here is 50% of the operational costs that are going on, how we can continue to sustain our athletics and our field maintenance, is coming through the boosters, through their membership funds, their concession sales, their gate receipts. And what that all translates to is oftentimes, most of the high school programs are bringing just for field maintenance. When it was grass, it was the field maintenance, now with synthetic turf, it's turf replacement field. But most boosters are bringing at least $35,000 a year to each of their high schools just to cover field maintenance costs. So I have been very concerned that targeting just athletic fees alone, the damage we will do to those communities that put far more time and money to support high school athletics, this $100 fee on just athletic families is not sitting well at all. And so I don't want to spend a lot of time on a budget line item that honestly is $1.5 million, so I just hope we're going to get smart. And this, you know, props to Ms. Huff for bringing up how Montgomery County does it. I think it's very reasonable, and I think we will earn a lot of community appreciation for not, you know, just targeting athletics once again. I know Mr. Moon wants to move me off, so let me just real quickly say, I had asked two other questions, and I just want staff to just give me the high level. I had asked, what is our funding rate for the ERFC and our FCERS monies that we are scheduled to give in this upcoming budget compared to what the board supervisors are doing at the funding level? If I remember, we are currently funded at around 76% of the fund level, and that's how I understood the additional, now we're at $11 million between the two, 11 million more that we're needing to bring to the table between those two funds to fund them at, again, I don't know what the magic percentage is, but if it turns out that the board supervisors are funding at a different level than we are, and then if this means we can fund it at their level and have any cost savings at all for this year, I think it's something to consider because their bond rate is our bond rate. And right now, as you can hear from us on the board, we are scraping for $1 million here and $1 million there, and it matters.
So in terms of the retirement rates, thank you for reminding us of that question. The county board of supervisors sets the rate for FCERS, but when we're looking at paying those retirement rates, what we're paying is the actuarially determined rate. So when we look at that increase for ERFC, that's to pay at that actuarially determined rate. So both county and schools are contributing equally to retirement in terms of funding them at that level. The Virginia retirement system, right, that rate is set by the General Assembly, and you're correct, that previously that rate was set below that actuarially determined rate, but with the governor's budget proposal for FY18, that will be funded at 100% of that actuarial rate as well.
So our funding rate for ERFC and FCERS mirrors what the county put into their budget for FY18?
For the rate, not for the dollar amount, for the rate that we're paying.
Well, I understand, right, the rate, but by doing that, then the percentage that it's funded at, which we said we have it at 76%, that's what theirs looks like, they're funded at 76% also?
So when you look at that rate, this goes back to, I believe, it might have been the section of the presentation for that ERFC work session that Al Karim did. In terms of that rate that you're talking about, that's the funded ratio for that retirement system, and that funded ratio looks at a number of different things. It's impacted by the assumptions that you're making in terms of which mortality table you're using, what your projected earnings are, your past earnings history, that's okay, and all of those different components. So when you look at that funded ratio, I believe you're correct, our funded ratios probably aren't the same. But when we look at the rate that we're paying, we have always paid that actuarially determined rate for ERFC. The board has never swayed or deterred from that, and that's what is critical in terms of our bond funding rate, that the county and schools are maintaining that commitment to fund those retirement plans at that rate that's determined by the actuaries.
So that was my question, without overcomplicating it, was simply, their FY18 budget, they are funding at the actuarial rate, and that's what we're going to do, and as a result, that's why we need the extra 11 million or something like that. So there's nothing to be found there at that point.
Correct. That 11.4 million increase was mitigated by the changes to the plan.
Right.
So that net increase in ERFC was about 9 million.
Right. The other thing is that I want to refresh everybody's memory that we were looking at substitute pay for the FY18 budget, and we've not revisited it. And we don't have any recommendations that have come forward because I don't think we gave clear direction to Superintendent Lockhart. But I will tell you, just this weekend, I was talking to a teacher, 20 years in our system. She is at one of our elementary schools, high need, Title I. She said it has been impossible to get substitutes this year. And she said, as a result, they often can't get a substitute, so the teachers then take 50% of the class that doesn't have the substitute. So they might normally, in this Title I, high need, high ELL, 19 kids become suddenly a 29-student classroom. And she said, Megan, I don't know what it is you guys need to do, but we cannot go through a second year like this. So whether, as board members, we want to look at that, the proposal again, that, or not the proposal, but the information that staff provided us, but I really think that this board has to be ready on Thursday to say, do we believe this is a priority and we've got to address it? Or, you know, are we going to look at fourth quarter, you know, year-end balance and saying, what can we do for one-time funding for FY18? But one way or another, we have to do something about substitute pay. I think we've heard more than enough, and we even saw in the staff presentation, it's a problem, and I think our teachers are expecting us to do something to remedy it. And then... And then I also had asked about the bonus for students, I mean, for teachers and employees who would not qualify for any step. Did that question get answered yet? And what number was that one?
The bonus question was 98.
Okay, all right. So that one, I believe we talked about also, there's an option where we could look at year-end savings and make that a one-time payment. So we may not necessarily go into this for next Thursday's budget vote, but I would like to have some conversation on Thursday to see where people are on that. Because one way or the other, I think it's an important part of the fact that we don't want employees who don't qualify for that to say, well, with rate of inflation and, you know, I'm actually making less next year than I did, you know, in the current year. So I think that's the other piece that's really important. And then finally, just to Ms. Huff's point about where we are on total compensation, I'm proud that this board and the leadership team are so committed to our teacher salary scale enhancement. I think that's, no one's unwavering about that. But from the very beginning, Dr. Garza made it clear, we were all talking about compensation, not salary in a vacuum. And so having the chart, like Ms. Huff was saying, we're going to need that for Thursday. We need to be very mindful so that our employees understand that where we're putting the money in, yes, you can keep chasing a salary to a salary, but we put in so much money into benefits, which we just heard our employees say is a key piece to keeping and retaining. Well, there's just, in the end, every employee in this entire region gets total compensation, and we have to be figuring that out. And I, when I look at the amount, I think it's, what, over 26 million? Was that, the number has shifted, but what is it that we're putting into FY18 at this point, salary, teacher's salary scale?
So when you look at the teacher salary scale enhancement, it's 26.6 million.
Right.
And it is that the budget does include a step increase for all in place.
Right, right, but I don't want to confuse that. My point is, so 26 million is part of that teacher salary scale enhancement. But as Ms. Huff pointed out earlier, we know from our climate surveys that the number-one word coming out of our employees is overwhelmed. So we're really trying to weigh, compensation's really important, but overworked, burnt-out teachers with large class sizes is also what they're telling us matters. And so looking at that 26 million for the teacher salary enhancement, we extended it to five years, but I'm thinking, based on the charts we saw alone, if we're talking total compensation, not salary alone, then is our five-year plan even not on total compensation but on salary? So then in the end, we could be way exceeding what the region has in total compensation. And we're struggling here to figure out how to balance class size and compensation.
I think because it's a five-year plan, I don't think we're going to be grossly exceeding the market. Because remember, we targeted the salary scale between 95 and 105%. So when you looked at the overall salary, and if there's a movement of the teacher scale within the surrounding jurisdiction of around 3% in the next five years, we'll be right around 100%.
I appreciate that.
Including, and then you add...
If you run the models and it shows us we come in at 100% in five years for total compensation, then I think that's where the board can better understand it. My concern is that you're mentioning 105%, but when we're sitting here trying to figure out how to find $14 million to not increase class size, then it's a question of where is that 26 million?
I understand, I understand.
Better serving our employees.
I was just letting the board know that because we can't predict what's going to happen in five years, we do have a 3% shift in the teacher scale. There's a 3% movement in the teacher scale. So if the market doesn't move by 3% over the five years, then we're going to be in a much better position. But we didn't want to be chasing the market each year, so we do have that movement built in.
I appreciate that. But again, just to clarify, you're talking about this teacher salary scale model that you've run is for total compensation, not salary alone?
We currently ran it for salary, but because we are on the lower end of that 95 to 105, I think I'm just making a statement that we're not going to be grossly above our target of between 95 to 105.
Salary only.
Even with benefits, even with benefits.
Right.
Because we didn't build the salary at 105%.
You built what at 105, then?
We did not. We did not build anything at 105%. We expect the salary scale to fall within a range of 95 to 105. So if the market moves somewhere around 3% in the next five years, we're going to be right around 100% of the salary market. So when you add approximately 4% because of the additional benefit, we're still going to be within the 95 to 105% target that we are using to build the salary scales.
Correct. But if we get within 100% of salary only, then because we are more generous in our benefits, we're now at, like you said, closer to 105. And this is a system that is struggling to find tens of millions of dollars each year to just not increase class size. So I feel like we're still, this is the big trade-off that we're trying to figure out. And I want to make sure we're at least at 100% total compensation, but I think we've got to be having a very transparent and accurate conversation about what it means when we talk about total compensation for our employees, not salary alone. Because right now, people still keep saying, I'm underpaid in Fairfax County. And that's not necessarily the case, depending where you're on the step, and not when you take in total compensation. I think we're competitive and we're wanting to get to our very best, but everybody knows 10 to 20 million, we're squeezing it from somewhere.
Thank you, Mrs. McLaughlin. I have Ms. Evans as the last one on the first list, and I have Ms. Heinz. Anybody else who has spoken before I go back? On the go-backs, I have Mrs. Strauss and Mrs. Church. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that that may be a perfect segue to where I wanted to go. I think we, over time, we have these two comparisons. One is total compensation and one is just salary. And I do think we need to get some clarity from our employees about what they look at and what we should be looking at. Because if you look at total compensation, the picture looks better than if you just look at salary. But I will say, when I have talked with teachers one-on-one, they're telling me they look at their salary. Now, maybe I'm talking to the wrong teachers, but I think that is where the focus tends to be, you know, how much do I make compared with other jurisdictions as opposed to when we add everybody's benefits together? So I do think that over, we should get some clarity on that. And if our employees really are saying, keep the benefits and I don't care as much about salary scale, I don't think they're saying that. I think our teachers want a higher salary scale. So that's what I've been focusing on. So I'm looking at slide six, and I'm seeing all the red there, and that continues to concern me that, you know, and this is with, this is with the 2017 market average versus what we are going to have in 2018. Is the, and maybe if this has been the answer, I apologize, but will we have a projection for market average for fiscal year 18 before we have to complete our work?
So Ms. Huff had previously asked a budget question response in terms of what other jurisdictions are planning for. Not every jurisdiction has made their final decisions. We can certainly share the data we have. It won't be that final comparison for market average, but it will be what we know other jurisdictions are considering at this point.
So we can do at least a pretty close estimate. So for example, if we, on that very first line, the FY 2017 market average, we can...
We won't be able to update these charts with the market average. Because, for example, other districts, we know that they're making an investment of a total amount of money, but we don't have their final salary scales. So we can say what other jurisdictions are planning on.
Right.
But in terms of actually doing the comparison to these charts to update them to FY18, that we won't be able to do.
Okay. So that's kind of unfortunate because I would like to see what our projected scales are compared with what, you know, the projected. But I understand if we don't have it, we don't have it, you know, that you can't manufacture it.
And then just if I could add, even though I think we've also been talking about the fact that some of the jurisdictions aren't doing a market scale adjustment.
Right.
There are jurisdictions that's doing a teacher's scale enhancement, very similar to what we're doing. And that's why it's a little difficult, because if they were just moving everything by 1%, we could take last year's scale and move it by 1%.
And just move it by 1%.
But they're actually investing a chunk of money into that teacher's scale, and we don't know how they're going to distribute that investment.
Okay. So because I am hoping to find a way to increase the scales, I don't know if we'll be able to do it, but I sure would like to try. I would love to see the total here, if we added a 1% MSA across the board. And then I would like to see what it would look like if we had a 1% MSA and then we went to the four-year teacher's scale. Is that possible? You know, went to the four-year phase-in rather than a five-year phase-in?
So Ms. Evans, when you say 1% MSA, are you referring to all employees or are you targeting just teachers?
Actually, I was targeting teachers.
Teachers.
Right. So, well, let me think about that a minute. For 1%, you've given us some figures on this, I believe. What is a 1% MSA across the board?
14 million dollars for teacher's scale?
For teacher's scale, okay. And, okay, so...
Is it proportional? So is it half that is a half a percent?
There was a budget question on that, and so, yeah, they calculated the one-quarter and the one-half, so that's in the budget questions. So I would like to see what these scales would look like if we were able to put a 1% MSA on there.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
That 26.6 million in Dr. Lockhart's proposed recommendation is to have a targeted adjustment of a teacher's pay scale. But you want to see across the board?
I want to see two things. I want to see that included, the 26, the five-year phase-in included, plus a 1% MSA.
Across the board.
And then I also want to see what it would look like if we had a 1% MSA and then went to a four-year phase-in of the scale enhancement.
Okay.
So...
For Thursday, just one second. For the Thursday evening, would those be available to the board, all the members by Thursday evening?
We need to know when to apply the 1% after the five-year and then apply the 1%.
No, 1% right now, for the next year.
1% right now, just for, from the FY17 scale, which is vastly different from where we're headed to the new scale.
Oh, you're saying which do first?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I'll say do the 1% first and then the scale enhancement.
To the current 17 scale.
Yes. I mean, whatever, on our budget tool that you gave us, we were able to add an MSA. What did that do? Did that do that first or did that do that second?
So when we were looking at the budget tool and thinking of doing an MSA, the way we were looking at an MSA was applying it to our FY17 scale.
Okay.
So rather than implementing the new teacher salary scales, just applying the MSA to the current scale.
So the number I'm seeing there is instead of?
Correct, correct.
Because I don't think it then adjusted. It didn't adjust the scale enhancement on the tool, I don't believe.
Because the tool is not, it's not savvy enough to go back and figure out how these things interact. So when we look at our salary scale currently, our FY17 scale, we know that we have some places on our FY17 scale, most notably the very end or the very top of our bachelor's degree lane, those salaries are already above the market average. So when we look at implementing the new teacher's salary scale, the bachelor's and the bachelor's plus 15 lanes end sooner than our current scale. Right? So we had talked about those teachers that are currently being paid above the market average, right, would be held at their current rate of pay. Versus if we apply an MSA to our current FY17 scale, we're increasing how much above-market we're paying those employees that are already above-market. So we were taking a targeted approach with our investment in FY18 and investing those dollars where we have the greatest gap to the market. So we weren't increasing the salaries in places where we were already above the market. Does that help?
You mean with the teacher's scale enhancement?
With the teacher's scale enhancement.
Right. But if we did the teacher's scale enhancement and a 1%, because we are also talking about the concerns about teachers who aren't on step. And one of the budget questions said if we add a bonus for 1%, that would cost us 2.4 million dollars.
Correct. So a bonus is different than a market scale adjustment. Because when we look at the bonus, we're applying a one-time payment to those people whose salaries are already above the market. It doesn't increase their base, so it doesn't make the whole base scale go up, not only for those people, but the people that follow them.
Okay.
Right? And it also then doesn't impact retirement and our other expenditures. So you can't compare the cost of a bonus to an MSA, they'll really be different.
So maybe rather than continuing here, I should take this offline with you about what I'd like to see.
Sure, we'd be happy to meet.
Okay. All right. Because I would like to try to raise those scales and have the phase-in of the scale enhancement be quicker. I think five years is too long. We've made this a priority. It was originally supposed to be three years and now we've gone to five. If we can make that faster, I sure would like to make that faster. The only other thing I'd say, I realize that there's concerns about the class size averages. I'm looking at the class size increases and seeing that there's significant impact on our high-need schools. But at the same time, I would say, in terms of the class sizes, that where we've gotten the reports on class sizes, we do have to take into account that we have, that schools with high needs need more resources, they just do. A lot of these schools that have lower class sizes have very high poverty, have very high ESOL and have very high special needs. And so they simply do need more resources.
Ms. Heinz?
Thank you. And if these questions have already been asked, please just tell me and I'll watch the film. So staying on salaries for a second, one of the, yeah, that's fine. One of the budget, and thank you, by the way, we get budget answers like three or four a day, I really appreciate it. I think we're up over 100 now, aren't we? So thank you to your staff very much. One of the questions I asked that I don't think I've seen yet, but maybe I've missed it or maybe you're still working on it, is getting to the question of how we could accelerate the teacher's salary enhancement back to four years rather than stretching out to five years. It's my understanding that stretching it out to five years saves 6.6 million, that's where we are. And if we increase the employee compensation to ERFC to buy a half a percent, that I think saves 7.4 million or something around there?
It does. When we apply that rate increase to all of our employees, not just the teacher-scale employees.
Okay. Okay. So that saves 7.4. So what I'm thinking is that we could trade those two off and then have some leftover for class size for the teacher, or maybe for something else. But the question I just wondered about was that trade-off. If I'm paying more in ERFC out of my teacher paycheck and we accelerate the salary enhancement a little bit, how is, you know, am I going to end up with less or more in my paycheck?
So it's going to depend where you are on the scale, right?
So I think that's what I asked, is like looking at different parts of the scale, can we get a sense? Is that coming, the answer to that, or I think?
Yes, budget staff are working on it, Alice confirmed.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Just take a look at it. And then looking at the staffing reserve, slide five.
Besides, before you go off of there, just to be helpful, you know, there were, I think, if I'm not mistaken, under Dr. Lockhart's proposal, there were about 2,700 employees who will not get any pay increase next year. If you ask them to put in half a percent of their, toward more contribution to our pension, they will be actually losing money. So just for your benefit, I want to share that with you.
Thank you. Because I was focusing on teachers, but you're right, it affects everybody. So, okay, all right. So maybe that's not the answer that we need. But going to slide five, the staffing reserve. But going to slide five, the staffing reserve, I guess, and again, if this has already been asked, I'll talk to somebody offline. It looks to me like, so in FY2016, we budgeted 273 positions. This year, we budgeted 438 positions for this school year, basically, and we're budgeting again 438. Why did we, I can't remember why we went, oh, we went up because we were trying to cover the caps. Okay, so the idea is with the same 438.5 positions, we'll be able to cover the caps. In spite of the fact that we're raising class size, we still don't feel like we need extra positions in there. So that's one question, is why don't we feel like we need more positions than last year? You already asked that? Okay, okay, sorry, I'll talk to you offline.
So what we mentioned briefly earlier is it's really impacted by where our actual enrollment comes in, right? So if our actual enrollment comes in below what we projected, right, chances are that we'll use fewer positions from the reserve. Versus when you look at when we came in above our projection, which we did this year, right, then that puts extra pressure on the reserve in addition to the class size caps, just enrollment coming in above.
Okay, thanks, I'll take a look at that. And then I guess the other question on this is additional positions. It says the second bullet can be added at year-end or quarterly. Do we have any sense of how many we could add? I mean, like if we just wanted to, you know, max out, how many we could add, how many positions we could add out of year-end, or 10? I mean, what are we talking about?
So when we've done it in the past, we've typically added 10 or 20, right? That's our typical allocation for one-time funding, although in one year, looking back historically, we did add 30. But I would really say typically 10 or 20 positions from a quarterly budget review is what we've done in the past.
All right, thank you. And we feel like we will have that much at year-end to do that if we wanted to add 10 or 20, if we felt like we needed to? Okay. All right, last question, just following up on Ms. Evans' question about our needier schools. I just, I took a look at Dogwood on the list, and they're slated, and Dogwood has 70-plus percent FRM. They're slated to lose 2.2 teacher positions, and I think that's probably because we're raising the floor. Is that probably why? And I can get specific answers on a particular school, but, and my second question about a school like Dogwood also is, they're going to be Title I next year. So I wonder if that was figured into the chart? Because doesn't Title I give extra resources for?
So Title I does allocate additional resources to schools, but they are not included in these charts, right? Title I funding is above and beyond any allocation. It has to supplement and not supplant, so that is not included in any of these. Just as a reference to help board members as well, our schools with the highest poverty are also impacted by the state's K3 class size reduction program. And in the budget question response, we did include that information so the board would have those state K3 caps as well as you look at these question responses.
Okay, but just to clarify, Dogwood actually has been Title I for a while, that's not new. Some of my other schools are new next year. But so this, assuming that their Title I funding stays flat, this is the answer for them for next year, is they will lose 2.2 teachers?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I have several board members on the go-back list, Mrs. Strauss, Mrs. Church, Mrs. Hub, Mrs. McLachlan, Ms. Paratchek, anybody else? I want to put your name on my list. Before I go to Mrs. Strauss, let me say, just a couple, let me make a couple of comments that, first of all, thanks for providing your budget response to my traditional ESOL high school. I have been, had been waiting for that information for many months. And unfortunately, when they came in, that didn't come in until like a Friday or so. And I was not really paying much attention to the budget on Saturday. So I mean, got to the budget yesterday and was looking for an opportunity to have a more conversation with the staff that, you know, Dr. Prestiello and Dr. Duran graciously agreed to meet with me sometime before Thursday so that I could be better educated before raising the unnecessary questions that, which I try to avoid. So I'm looking forward to having them meeting for a better education on my side. And the next one was that, I think the budget staff will remember, Dr. Lockhart as well, that Ms. Delana Kofax and I, when we met to prepare for budget work session, that we talked about, I think Ms. Delana Kofax and I talked about, you know, raised, you know, potential bonus for the employees who may not get any pay increase under the current proposal, and whether, you know, we might be able to explore some options out of year-end surplus. That's probably where I will be interested in going. So I may, if nobody else, I may craft a motion, as a follow-on motion to the, you know, main budget motion. Okay, thank you, and I will go to Mrs. Strauss.
Okay, very quickly, since we are behind, I look forward to your follow-on motion, Mr. Moon, for potential bonus at year-end. I think that is one way to solve that. I just wanted to share a little history on the trades. As our budgets have become tighter, there has been greater oversight of trades, and regional assistant superintendents have to approve those trades. And as, again, talking with all of the principals in Rainsville, they asked to be able to preserve that flexibility, knowing that it's very tight, but because the changing needs of students each year, they need some flexibility to be able to adjust staffing to meet the children's needs. And then the other piece is that, again, asking class size, pay, all the rest of that, obviously, people would love to have smaller class sizes and more pay. But given either, there is a great deal of concern about this year being able to actually hire people into the positions that we have put into the budget. And this ranges from my Title I schools to my non-Title I schools. They all had a hard time hiring, and so they are very concerned about simply being able to fill their teaching positions. Therefore, whatever we do with money in the paycheck, they feel is important. That's what I'm hearing. Thank you.
Mrs. Church?
Okay, now that I've been able to look at 99, 101, let me start with 99. And not that I'm frustrated, but I'm frustrated, because what I asked for were actuals, not averages. And the last report that we had, the copy that I sent back to staff, were the actual classrooms with actual teacher names with actual class sizes next to them. And the problem with averages is, is that once you start ruling averages, averages tend to cloud what's actually happening. And this is insightful, but it isn't actual. And I don't, to me, I don't understand why this isn't a turnkey request. Every single school should know exactly how much, how many students are in their building, how many students are in the classrooms by grade, so it shouldn't be that hard. So that's the first thing. Because there is a very real difference between averages and actuals. And that gives us an idea of exactly how many classrooms, and I did this, from the last report, I was able to just turn down to the exact number, how many classrooms were, you know, at 17 or below, how many were at 18, how many were at 19. And it's infinitesimal in terms of the change. And so at one end of the table, there is, you know, there are protestations that this is a massive impact, it's significant, and now we're left as board members to either try to dispel each other's myth and understanding or not, and I don't have the data to show it. So, hold on, that's part one. Part two is that there is, has been the statement by Ms. Evans that some, these schools need more resources. And my question continues to be, to do what? What do they need more resources for? Because what are the resources intended to do? Resources are intended to academic achievement. If we're not showing, if you cannot show me that, and we haven't been able to show because we've had report after report after report, if you can't show me that those resources are impacting student achievement, that we are moving the needle on student achievement in those schools, then they're needed for what? Because they're not doing what we're intending them to do. Except, and he was sitting here all morning and I was just about to give him credit, dang it, is project momentum. Project momentum has been presented to us with a great degree of clarity that driving particular resources to particular classrooms for particular needs, and whether it's professional development, whether it's additional instructional coaches, whether it's reading resources, where driving in, for a discrete population of either teachers or students, driving the resources to do something that's needed in that classroom, that moves the needle. Now, now you're changing the picture of what does the, what is the money intended to do? And the money is the bodies. So, you know, I'm saying teachers, teachers' resources. I mean, we say resources, and that's nebulous. It's money. Money is what's in the budget, money is what we're voting on. And so the resources are intended to help student achievement. And where has there been a report that you can point to, anyone can point to, that says by doing, by layering, not a little, not some, in some cases, almost twice as much spending on a per-student basis for schools that are Title I and have exceptionally small classroom sizes, that we have by that measure alone, by adding quote-unquote "more resources", which is more money, that we've yielded a different academic outcome for those children? And that's the fallacy that we keep talking about every year, is that we pour tens of millions of dollars under the notion that they need the resources. But if we're not moving the needle, we're doing damage on two parts. One is we're spending the money, and two is the children aren't getting the academic achievement out of it. So it's a double whammy. So this is the frustration that I have in not being able to have us follow the Hansel and Gretel popcorn trail from the proclamation that we need to do this to the per-student spending in some of these schools, that with Title I, layers many, many thousands of dollars more per student in additional resources, for what? You know? And I know that's a pain...
Are you asking me to respond?
Well...
I mean, you're looking at me and you're...
Well, I...
I mean, if you'd like me to respond, I'm happy to respond.
I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily, we don't necessarily need to have a back-and-forth dialogue unless Mr. Moon says...
Ms. Evans, I'm going to put you on my go-back list.
But this is the reality of a difference between a philosophical approach to a budget, to say, well, we need to spend, we need to spend more money on children in need. Okay, I don't fundamentally disagree with that. But if we're spending more money on children in need and we can't show that there is an academic improvement other than, you know, and I was an early naysayer to project momentum and its previous predecessors because we couldn't show that it was doing something. Now it is. And if that's the model that we're going to adopt and we're going to say we have something measurable, we have something that is a productive outcome for those children, great. Increase project momentum times three times, times four times. But to layer $46 million in schools to create smaller class sizes because quote-unquote "students need more," we are struggling to show that we're making a difference. So I can't do it with what's been given to me. I appreciate it. And when I go down and I look at the class size caps that occur in question 101, there's nothing that's tied to that. We just have these new class size caps that are, I assume, based on FRM.
The state sets them every single year, and the state sets them based on the percentage of students that are eligible for free meals. So each year, we get an update from the state on the caps that apply for the next year.
But the caps that are there are the state caps for Title I funds, they're not for...
No, they're state K3 caps for part of our basic aid. So every single class in that school in grades K to 3 has to meet that cap in order for us to get that portion of our state revenue. So it's not tied to Title I, it's a separate requirement for state aid.
Okay, so there's non-federal monies. The Title I is the federal monies, which they're going to get anyway.
Correct.
It's additional state, so that's another point, is not only are you talking Title I monies, now you're layering on state aid on top.
Well, that state aid comes into the system as a whole, as long as the schools that are covered by the state K3 cap are meeting those cap requirements, right? We use that towards our needs-based staffing, that revenue.
And is that only an average of K through 3, or is that in every grade?
They look at every individual class, not even at the grade.
Okay, well, that's, thank you, that's exactly my point, is if they look at every individual class, then we should be reported to on what every individual class was, which was the whole point in me asking in the first place.
And I've made that request to you on my individual teacher.
Right, so the only other question is, and maybe it's in here somewhere, I had asked about the impact, or the cost of keeping ESOL flat instead of growing the per-student cost after we're having a, basically a 3% downturn in the number of students, and we've had a 22.5% increase in the cost. So I'm not sure where that is.
They're still working on that question, right? When we look at our ESOL, you're correct that our total number of students is decreasing, but our students with higher needs is increasing, but they are working on that response.
Right, but the distribution of those higher needs are proportionally these students that are ages 17 and above, correct?
And I don't think so. I think when we look at overall, but we'll pull that data, I believe the increase overall is we're seeing more students across the board that are coming in with, requiring that higher level of service, not just the older students.
When I talked to Dr. Duran, the predominant increase that we've seen has been in students ages 15 and above. And that we have a, I mean, we have 4,500 students who are 18 and older. So, you know, the cost of bringing ESOL to a kindergartner who's rapidly acquiring language is going to be fundamentally different than an 18, 19, 20, 21, up to, you know, their 23rd birthday year-old who doesn't have a facility for the language.
I'm sure the staff is working on a response to that budget question, but Mr. Poria, since you are here.
Yeah, it's, I don't have the data in front of me, I could look at it. I don't believe that there's been a predominant, that the bulk of the increase of Level 1 and 2, so if we're talking about Level 1 and 2 students, those are the students that need the most support, that it's not just the students that are 17 and older, that we've had that from kindergarten, first, all the way up through 12th grade, that that increase has happened. So we can share the data with you. It's also particularly like 14-year-olds, 15-year-olds, as they come in with Level 1 and are, whether they be CIF students or not CIF students, but they're newcomers. Okay, so they're, if they're just a newcomer student, a new immigrant to the United States, beginning level of ESOL, beginning ESOL level, that they would need more, they would need a smaller class size, more support, they might need aides, they might need teachers. We have to have across the board in their content areas, that's what we're giving them.
Right, but the question still remains that we're looking at a 3% downturn in the number of ESOL students, and we're up 22.5% on the cost. So the question is, even if there's some students who are Level 1, who are higher needs, if you have an overall downturn in your number of students, why do we continue to drive the cost on a per-student basis up?
So the way we calculate costs for ESOL, very similar to costs for special education, is we look at the student's projected level of service at every single individual school. Using our staffing formulas based on each level of service, we then calculate out exactly how many teachers they would need at each location. We then compare that back to the prior year. So when you look at the...
We're talking now at a cost of nearly $4,000 a student, and that's on top of all the other education costs. This is just the ESOL delivery. So that there is no efficiency... So, that there is no efficiency to be gained when you're now having fewer students. I mean, if it's the per-student ratio in the staffing, and we'd already gone up, we were over, we're at like 912 positions on this, why is it that when we get fewer students, there's no efficiency to be gained, even if some of those students are in the higher needs?
We'll get you the exact numbers, so we can give you the data. But when you're looking at those staffing formulas, there's a vast difference in terms of the resources required for a student who's coming speaking no English versus a student who's at a much higher level and gets a much lower level of service. So, again, we can give for FY '18.
I would posit that that has not been adequately explained in the need to, and how you're doing a staffing formula, that when you have fewer students, that you are driving up the cost per student. To me, it's, are you driving the resources to where the students need it? If they're in that, in that English Level 1? And where are, again, it's where are they in the system? You know, are there not existing resources that then address them? Or are we layering on, you know, additional costs with more positions? And is it not reasonable for us to say, "Look, you're having thousands fewer students next year, how do you continue to justify that the school system has to grow ESOL services to the point that we're almost at $4,000 a student?"
I guess the one clarifying point, and I think we'll need to look at the data specifically, but it's that we have shown that the number of Level 1 and 2 students, particularly at the middle school and high school level, not necessarily age 17 and older, but at the middle school and high school level has increased dramatically over the last couple of years. That does drive the number of teachers that we need because those class sizes for Level 1s and 2s at middle school and high school level are smaller, and we need teachers for those sections. So-
You've actually just proven my point. If the number has increased dramatically at middle school and high school, then in order to wind up with thousands fewer next year, you're gonna have to have a dramatic downturn in the elementary. Are you not? And can you not redeploy people that are in elementary to meet the middle and high school? I mean, you know, we can't, I mean, this is a question I've been asking for probably two months now, so I'm still a little bit surprised that we're a week before passing the budget and we're not in adequate explanation.
So, let me-
And I appreciate, Mr. Moon, I'm gonna let you take me offline on this. I think, I think there has to be an explanation how we're winding up at 3900, 3826, or 3886, I forget what the number is.
So, let me ask Ms. Michael. Could we expect the information Mrs. Shorche is seeking by Thursday so that we could have, as needed, further discussion on this?
Yes, absolutely we can. And we'll go back, I'm still slightly confused. The ESOL cost per pupil in the proposed budget, which was prior to the approved budget projections, is actually only going up 2.5%, which is lower than our increase in terms of the increasing teacher salary and benefit costs.
Yes, it's going up 2.5% per student on this per-student cost, and we're gonna have fewer students. So, it's a double whammy. We're having fewer students, but you're driving up the cost per student. Yep.
Anyway, Ms. Michael, you know, I could disagree with what Mrs. Shorche has just said, but please provide the data so that I could look at the numbers. Okay, thank you. I have a Mrs. Huff, next.
Thank you. I'm gonna totally switch gears and then come back to this, just for something fresh. Okay. On the pupil placement fees, I know that I've heard publicly, we have said that it does not affect students applying to TJ or AAP. Is that correct?
So, students who apply to TJ already pay an application fee? Right, so that application fee will increase to $100 to be consistent with the other pupil placement application fees? Ninety.
Ninety, okay. And then how about AAP?
So, students that are going to an advanced academic center, they will not be charged that fee.
Even if they have a local Level 4?
Currently, as we have calculated it, that's correct.
So, is there a way we can make that clearer in the line item? I've just been receiving a lot of questions about it. I obviously had to clarify it today for myself. So, I think that would be helpful to the public as we're going forward to vote on that item. And then, this thing else I know we've talked about. When we, if we do this fee, the APIB test fees for up to six classes, are we gonna still require the test for up to six? Or it's a total decoupling with this line item?
We saw that as a complete decoupling.
Okay, so from now on, even the first six, there's no requirement for the test? Okay. All right, well, back to the other topic. Okay. I know, I know. Especially because I'm trying to figure out how to ask this to be clear. How many positions from that 438.5 reserve positions are currently used or will be used based on projections to drive, to keep that class size regulation below 30 in elementary school? If we increase by the .5 students? And this is getting to Ms. McLaughlin's question about, it seems like we're doing some seesaw here.
We don't really have that information because we don't know how the students are-
Are gonna fall out.
Exactly.
But we still base this reserve on the fact that we're having a certain number of students. And so, in my mind, I feel like we're ending up spending more money in just in an efficiency because we're saving money by raising class sizes and we're adding money to lower class sizes. And I would just like to get to a bottom line. All of this is an assumption. All of the budget items are an assumption based on a student population. I understand that the exact students and where they show up is not known until September.
We could provide you with the information on how the staffing reserve was used this year. And then-
Okay, well, let's start with that. I'll start with that. But the increase in .5 class sizes, the increase in .5 for the student ratio is still being a claim to be a $14.7 million savings based on where we assume those students are gonna show up. So, it seems to me likewise, we can assume how much from the reserve is gonna be needed to make sure we maintain less than 30 in initial elementary school. You're still making an assumption in the $14.7 million about where those kids are gonna be, because you're making an assumption on the teachers.
But I think you could also make the assumption that those students can currently be all absorbed within that class size cap.
Absolutely, and then that $14.7 wouldn't be a savings at all?
No, absorbed in a sense that our current class size-
The reserve wouldn't be needed at all.
With the reserve that was used last year, with the reserve that was used last year to bring all the class sizes below 30. So, if the classes were at 33, 34, we were providing an additional teacher position. So, now those class sizes would be 17.
But the fact that we're not increasing the reserve means we are making the assumption that they're gonna all be absorbed.
Currently.
I think the difference is when we look at this, and I don't know if this'll help, so if it doesn't, please say so. When we look at the class size and using the reserve to address class sizes, right, the only extra burden put on the reserve should be those class sizes that were just under that class size cap before. So, you're correct in thinking if students enrolled the exact same way next year as they did this year, which we know they won't, but hypothetically speaking, if they did, unless that school had all of their class sizes right at that cap, and that increase was just enough to trigger them falling above the cap, then there would be a need. But if all their classes, hypothetically speaking, were running at 24.5, you know, a class size increase of a half would be 25, and there is no impact to that class size cap or the reserve at all.
All right, well, I would like to see as the next step, how many from that reserve were used for that, to implement that regulation? I think that's a starting point. Okay.
So, just trying to be helpful. That, you know, when we put in certain amount of money for, let's say, enrollment growth, and savings from increasing the class size by half, or raising the floor from 17 to 18, I guess, Ms. Huff, or my question could be, are we basing those numbers, are we coming up with those numbers based upon assumption of certain number of students at certain school in certain grade?
Correct, so when-
So, we, so why with those numbers, we were assuming, can come up with a number that would be needed out of a staffing reserve to address the cap issues? Is that?
Yes.
Yeah, using the, exactly the same number we used to come up with those numbers?
Because we-
From school to school.
So, when we are calculating staffing for every single school, we're not looking at every single grade individually. We're looking at kindergarten, and then we look at grades 1 through 6. So, we're not, when we calculate out that staffing, we're not asking in the projection, how many second graders, how many third graders?
And we have no means of doing that, or just it would require enormous, enormous human resources to come to that granular level? Is that?
We, in order to calculate that at that individual granular level, we would have to change how we do projections because we even don't project our special education services at that individual grade level. So, it's something that we couldn't do immediately. Long-term, it would require more resources and a change.
I guess, Ms. Huff, I guess there is a systematic limitations as how much we can do it, so.
No, I understand that we can't have an actual, I mean, I understand we don't know how this- but you asked my, you re-asked my question.
Right, right, basically, yeah. I thought that's where you wanted to go.
Yes, and I still would like an assumption for this.
I think that if my question got answered, I think it would help all of us because I think, Mr. Moon, the way you were asking it, the way you were going was very interesting, in that if you look at the actuals, if we started looking and said, "Okay, here are, here's the schools we have, and here's the grades, and here's the actuals", we would know by number of schools, how many grades we have exceeding caps or exceeding certain averages across all the grade, at the grade level. And we'd get a better understanding of where the problem is. But right now, when you mask with averages, it's very hard to figure out what's going on. So, I'm glad you asked that question.
Can Ms. Huff continue?
Okay. So, then my next question, similarly confusing. When you showed the increase in 12.7 million and 2.7 million based on student growth, did that account for, did the 14.7 million in savings for increasing a half a student account for that growth?
Yes, first, we calculated how much staffing we would allocate based on that increased enrollment projection for next year. So, we got the cost of growth. Then from that higher number of students and teachers, we did the increase.
And that was a number we had way before. It was 10 initially, and so that's where that extra 2.7 is, plus another 2.7. Okay. All right, so now, I'm gonna go to Ms. Evans' point, which I thought was good. And, you know, I think I have a similar sentiment, that the teachers I speak to talk about salaries, what they care about, it's what they compare. And I think where we've done ourselves a disservice, I think we've done our employees a disservice, is we've never talked about the conversation together. We talked about salaries, and we said, "Employees, do you want to increase salary? Is that important to you?" They said, "Yes." And then we went on to talk about the pension plan. We said, "Employees, is the pension plan important to you? Or is it okay if we touch it?" And they said, "Yes, it's important to us, we can't touch it." And so, I actually don't have a good sense of, when I, when we put it up there and we say we're spending 11 million on this line item for pensions, and much higher than that, and we go and we go, and then we say, "And at the same time, we want to increase 26 million", when we haven't asked the question at the same time, and when we have a total compensation chart that shows us, actually, can we pull up number 6 again, please? Oh, yeah, 7 then. What percent, within what percent? So, you're, so step 20 and step 15 are still at 99%. So, we've reached our goal on total compensation, to Ms. McLaughlin's point. We are within 95 to 105%. We're actually almost within 100 to 105%. So, with our salary scale plan, I'm still confused as to how we don't think we're gonna be within our upper range. And I'm happy, I'd rather be at 100 and 105%, but we're pretty much there. What I don't know from our employees is how they want to be there. Do they want to be there how they are currently there? But that's not what I'm hearing. They want to be there by having more in- and taking the whole thing into consideration. So, that's where we're gonna have to figure out in the next few weeks because that's where we are. We can grab a few million from here and grab a few million from there. But at the end of the day, we're talking about 14.7 in class size, burdening them with that, or already, to Ms. Evans' point, going down from the 33 million to the 26 million in salaries. So, the way I see it is we've almost, we've pretty much reached our goal, but our goal apparently would- I don't know how the employees want to be there, so.
Okay, now I have Mrs. McLachlan to be followed by Ms. Perchley and Ms. Evans. With a time check, we have basically a two, almost two-hour mark with the board members' consent that could we have another 10, 15 minutes to wrap up this budget? Okay, with that, with the 10 minutes, I'm gonna have to limit the amount of time each board member will spend on the go-back. McLachlan, and Ms. Perchley, and Ms. Evans, and we'll be done.
Okay, so, racing against time. This chart here first. If we look at step 15, the dollar difference of where we are, it shows $1,1471 divided by a 10-month salary position, right? We compensate them for 10 months. So, we're talking it's a difference of $147 a month. Okay, so, when we look at the fact that 14,000, or roughly about half of our full-time employees are our teachers, trying to move a scale, whether you're at 99%, 100%, 101%, times 14,000 employees, it's a lot of money. But what ends up in the teacher's pocket for right now, even if you look at it, is our teachers would say, "So, if I'm here in Fairfax County, step 15, I get paid $147 in total compensation, less than the market average in the region." So, I do think that the message we've been giving to a lot of our employees is, "You are undercompensated in Fairfax County, we're hemorrhaging teachers, and you've got a serious problem on your hands." And instead, what this is, is we've needed to take a scalpel, we've needed to be very intentional, but, you know, one of the things that I'm sort of looking in the direction of the two teacher association presidents, and Mr. Hickerson, I want you just looking over here for just a quick second, it's okay, is that, you know, I have worried as much about teacher morale. If people are, if we communicate out that we are undercompensating teachers and we're hemorrhaging them to other jurisdictions, especially like maybe Arlington, then what happens is, teachers don't look at this data, which says, "With the new infusion of money, it's about $150 a month differential, working here versus the, within the region." Those are the things that I think we need to have the conversation because then we've had other people saying, "Look, ERFC is a great recruiter. It's one of the things that keeps people here long-term." And so, you know, I was one of the people that said, "Don't touch ERFC right now, and let's work with the board supervisors, and let's see what it is." But we made the change, we've asked employees to contribute more. But yet, as Ms. Evans has said, we don't know, is it that they, they want to have more take-home dollars each month in their bank account? Or do they want to have the benefit that long-term means something? And in the end, this chart shows you- And in the end, this chart shows you, it, it's, it's gonna be a trade-off one way or the other. Because you're either gonna have a, a more expensive pension benefit that pays you more after you retire or you might have short-term more money in your pocket in your, in your monthly paycheck. And so I, I do think that we, we kind of started our work here, but everything kept driving the public conversation about the salary scale. But we didn't do it in concert with, when you infuse into the salary scale, but total compensation's still there, then your benefits infusion is going to change. And what we heard is, don't touch our benefits. So I, I, I do think that this, this board and the school system, I think going into, as we are in FY eighteen, going into FY nineteen budget, we better figure this one out because we've got a model that we're building toward, whether it's four years or five years, but we're not even sure which, which way the people want the money to be in their paycheck. Is it in their paycheck or is it in their, their pension, something in between? But I think we need to be walking through the math a little bit better. The other thing that I wanted to point out with um is, I absolutely believe that we have to make sure that our neediest schools have the supports, the staffing and the instruction they need to close achievement gaps. I think everybody in this room believes in that. What I think I heard Ms. Schultz raising was, we haven't seen the needle move the way we've needed to. And if all of us in this room are dedicated to closing achievement gaps, especially for our socioeconomic disadvantaged populations, but the class size piece hasn't achieved that, then we're actually doing a disservice to the community if, by not finding what is working. I think Project Momentum, we have heard, is an incredible way to provide intensive supports and services. So it, in my mind, I would like for our FY eighteen work to be focusing on and saying, where do we know that this effort produces this effect? And we've been doing needs-based staffing for a long time, but I don't know that we've done a very good job of being able to bring the data forward to say, by doing this needs-based staffing, this is where we saw that the improvement. We saw Project Momentum brought that improvement and maybe we need to spend more dollars toward Project Momentum type work. Um, because otherwise, we're spending money, but we're actually not helping the students in the best way possible. And the final point I'd like to make, Mr. Moon, is, and I, I was doing this math.
Mrs. McLachlan, I think.
That's fine, but everybody needs to be mindful, yes, this is my wrap-up point. Fourteen million dollars, which is what we're all wrestling with on the class size increase, fourteen million dollars is one-half of one percent. I don't know, any corporate organization in the country with a board of directors overseeing two point eight billion dollars would wring their hands over half of one percent, one-half of one percent. They would say to the CEO and the management team, one-half of one percent, you guys go figure it out. But instead, you all sit through, as leadership team members, countless hours. We sit through it with each other for countless hours, and I actually feel like we have regressed and we're asking questions today's work session that we already asked you guys to talk about five months ago. And that includes, what would we do now if we brought it back to four years for the salary scale? What would it do if we gave a one percent MSA? You guys, we can't be regressing. We gotta start having amendments on the table, but one-half of one percent, I think the community would be really scared that between LT and the school board, we're talking about one-half of one percent.
I know that Ms. Heinz also raised her hand, but we only have five minutes left. So uh, hopefully, Ms. Percy, you go first.
Okay, I will speak quickly so Ms. Heinz can get her point in. Um, one-half of one percent, we're looking at a forty-five million dollars. So I think that's what we need to keep in perspective, that's my point of view, that's fine. Um, a couple of questions, Dr. Lockard, do you know of the twenty-six-hundred-and-eighty FTEs that will not see, um, that will see, I guess, less than a one percent increase um, in, in their salary if we follow this plan? Do you know what percentage, or does staff know what percentage of that are teachers? And where the other large pockets are?
We, we can give you that breakdown, but probably the largest number in that total is teachers.
Okay. Um, and I assume some of the others are just from the, are from the unified and admin scale, correct?
Correct, they're everyone from, you know, there are bus drivers at the top of the scale to principals to office assistants, it's across the board.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. Um, one question I have as we talk about take-home pay, there's something, I don't know, and if you've offered this already, please let me know. Um, because if we're looking at salary and compensation, take-home pay also needs to take into account employee contributions, correct? To, to pensions and to um health benefits and other. Do we, have we compared that, the raw take-home pay? Is it possible to do that to surrounding jurisdictions? Did I miss that somewhere? We probably didn't have that level of detail in any of our responses, but our employees are going to be contributing more than other employees because they do have to pay toward ERFC. Okay, so when we're looking at take-home pay, A, it's not really, not necessarily compensation because that includes full benefits, right? So it might be. That is salaries and benefit costs for the employer. So from the employees portion of the salaries, they are contributing at a higher level than other surrounding jurisdictions. We did not account for that in these calculations. Is there a way maybe for future to be able to kind of see the aggregate employee contribution and how it affects take-home pay?
In the short term, we can give you, I think, um, some pages from the WABE guide
Okay.
that will um hopefully answer some of that questions.
Okay, I will review that again, thank you. Um, and then um finally, I um I, I want to be cognizant, just want to double-check currently, and I know we're looking at hiring for next year. Dr. Remy still here, is it still special ed where we have the most difficulty filling positions?
It's one, yes, I mean, it's on our critical needs list with a number of other positions.
And are, do, do our Title I schools also see a similar um difficulty in hiring?
Uh, they do, but actually, our, our Title uh one schools, our project minimum schools have been doing fairly well in terms of hiring so far. The feedback we've gotten has been positive, it goes to hiring earlier, but um we won't have, while we are optimistic about where we're retiring, we'll have a better picture as we get later into the summer.
And do we track, and maybe this will follow along, because one thing I've heard from principals, not only feeling they're, well, losing teachers to other districts, but also to non-Titel I schools after, you know, they've had a teacher for a few years, is that something we've tracked or could maybe get data for? Down, not for Thursday, but down the road?
Yes, I think that we actually provided some of that information um earlier in the, um, in the school year that we can pull up. Um, but some of those transitions between schools, it's inside the division.
Okay, that would be helpful, I'll look at that. And, and then finally to um Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Huff, I, I am open to the idea of looking at different structure for, for um fees. I, I would prefer not to touch middle school, I think that's a program that is very critical on developmentally. Uh, their school year gets, as you know, school day gets out very early um and would not want to have a negative impact on that. Um, and, and I think we have a lot of things we need to target before high school, uh, and that's a really good area to do that. But that being said, um, I hope if you're preparing a follow-on motion, I, or a motion, I'd be happy to, to see what that means. And would love to get um staff perspective on possible impact analysis of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I know we are out of time, but I think Ms. Ms. Evans deserves an opportunity to respond to some of the questions or comments made by Ms. Schultz.
All right, I'll try to be very quick. I, I, I do want to start by saying, I don't think it's regressing for us to be trying to look at uh salary scale enhancements. Uh, that's something that's been a top priority of this board for a long time. So um I'm gonna continue to look at that as far as uh just leaving it with the superintendent to find fourteen million dollars. I can't support doing that, uh, that's uh, you know, we need to be able to balance this budget before we approve it. On the class size, um, I will say that I won't belabor this, but, you know, class size can't count for some kids and not for others. Um, if, if class size is important for kids, it's important for kids and it's particularly important for those that face more challenges, it just is. Uh, particularly those that um are facing poverty issues and they um have uh perhaps language barriers and perhaps special needs. Uh, poverty brings its, its own, its own issues. Um, uh, classes in some of our schools have a huge range of current skill sets from everyone who uh needs basic numeracy to those who are ready to do pre-algebra. And uh other classes in our highest need schools have a, a far greater range and it requires um lower class sizes to deal with that range. I think that the needs-based staffing has, has proven itself to be effective over the years. Project Momentum has helped as well, and I, I feel very strongly about keeping our needs-based staffing.
Yes, Dr. Lockard.
I will try not to prolong this uh too much longer. I just felt like I needed to make a quick comment about slide number seven. This is just my take for what it's worth. Um, when I look at this total compensation uh chart here, I think of it in terms of the teachers that we want to attract, the teachers we want to retain, all right? So all, all things considered, as Mrs. Quinn said, other systems are gonna continually um work as we are to improve their salary scales and total compensation. We know right now, other systems are putting money toward that, we're just not exactly sure how it's gonna play out. We do know some systems are trying to improve their salary scales just like we are. Our focus for this year is, again, our teacher scales and it targets pretty much the middle, where you see the least amount of discrepancy or even where we're in the hole. Okay, so I'm, and, and I'll say to you, um, uh, these are market averages. Someone said earlier, there's real, a real difference between averages and actuals. So in the end, there's still gonna be people that pay higher than us and have total compensation higher us and people that are gonna have it lower. If we, I feel like if we don't keep pace, and if we could go back to wherever we just were, I, I like being attractive, only about three percent over that market average. I like being attractive to new teachers. And I think there should be some uh reward for that longevity from step twenty-five to thirty for folks who stay with us that long, they should be paid above the market average. The work is in the middle there. And that's where we lose people. Lose people from year four, five on when they start making decisions about whether it's a family or what, what they want to do. And so that's where the work of the teacher salary scale uh enhancement that we've been looking at here gets really infused. Will we be a, above a hundred percent of the market average? Maybe. Will other systems continue to move theirs? Probably. But a little bit of the thinking is more around the, the long-term life of how do we attract teachers? Entice them to be here and how do we keep them here uh for the long haul?
And if I could just add to my boss's eloquent comments, you know, there's questions about what retains teachers. So remember that these targets are to the middle of the scale, right? So if I was looking at the average, I'd say, well, it's only fourteen hundred over the course of the, the year, the difference between my salary and the market scale, would that attract me? Maybe, maybe not. But remember, there are like ten schools in the WABE, right? So if you're looking at what you would make in the top two districts, it wouldn't be fourteen hundred more, it'd be significantly more. And also, when I talk to teachers, I say, okay, well, maybe I'll make the same salary, but if I move west and I get a house for a hundred thousand dollars less than what I can get in Fairfax, that's putting money back in my pocket too. So I think these are, you know, keep in mind that what, our target is to the middle of the scale and when it's competition with other districts, that means that half of them make higher than the market average and if we're below it, we're not very competitive. And that we're also need to be competitive when we look at the cost of living, which is vastly difference within the market area.
Okay, thank you, with Ms. Heinz understanding that we'll close this work session. I know there were several budget questions, additional information board member have asked for staff to provide, hopefully by Thursday, as much as possible. In light of fact that we are forty-five minutes behind, I'm not gonna treat them as the next steps because staff has agreed to provide those information, they understand what they are. Whether we will take a two-minute break before we go to next topic. Thank you.